Six o'clock and I call this regularly scheduled Dunwoody City Council meeting to order on July fourteenth. Unless there's an objection, seeing none, um, this meeting is called to order. Councilman Secunder, can you lead us in the invocation and pledge, please?
Please rise for those who are able. At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, Chief, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, at this time, I would like to, uh, uh, give out, uh, several awards, uh, to our officers. Um, and basically these are the life-saving awards, uh, that the, uh, officers, earned. So at first I'd like to call up Officer Jacory Edwards. And I'm going to read his citation on the events that occurred on March sixth. Alright, on March sixth, uh, twenty twenty-five, at approximately nineteen ten hours, Officer Edwards responded to a distress call at ninety-four perimeter center west Capitol Grove in reference to a seventy-six-year-old female choking on food. Upon arrival, Officer Edwards found the female sitting at a table, struggling to breathe and unable to speak. Recognizing the gravity of the situation and the fact that the woman was choking, Officer Edwards acted swiftly. Without hesitation, he laid the female down and deployed his department-issued LifeVac device, successfully removing the obstruction cause obstruction causing the choking. After the piece of food was cleared, he carefully seized the female, ensuring her safety before medical assistance arrived. Officer Edwards' quick thinking and use of his training ensured the prompt resolution of a life-threatening situation. To catfire rescue and AMR, medical staff arrived shortly after, taking care, uh, taking over care of the patient. Officer Edwards demonstrated exceptional judgment, skill, and professionalism during the emergency. His decisive actions played a critical role in the saving the life of this individual. Uh, and if you recall, this is actually our second life save, uh, with the LifeVac device. So I'd like to commend Officer Edwards on his quick thinking, uh, and I want to go ahead and, and award him the life-saving award. Officer Edwards does an outstanding job every day. Um, you know, and, and a lot of the, um, circumstances, critical incidents, uh, that we see. Um, this is just a s- another part of what we do, um, uh, having this equipment, having the tools that all of you, uh, let us have so we can get out there and effectively handle, um, situations like this. So I'd like to commend him on, on a job well done. Yeah, sure. Yeah, we can. Alright, this time I'd like to, um, welcome up Officers Justin Davis, Trey Wan Street, and Officer Eddie Estes. Alright, on January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, at approximately zero nine fourteen hours, officers were dispatched to one eleven perimeter center west, the Lumeridian Hotel in reference to a medical call. Dispatch advised that a male subject was found in a vehicle, unresponsive, and not breathing. Officers were on scene and within seconds, uh, and found the male outside the vehicle and still unresponsive. Officers Justin Davis, uh, Trey Wan Street, and Eddie Estes immediately started life-saving measures on the victim. The male subject did not have a pulse and was not breathing. Officers began CPR and attached an AED. The AED advised that the victim needed a shock and was administered. The officers then started CPR again and continued until paramedics arrived on the scene. Once it was safe, the officers turned the victim's care over to the paramedics. A follow-up was done later with the hospital and the staff advised that the male victim was still living. Due to the quick response time and the first aid provided by the officers on scene, another life was saved. Great job by all officers involved in this incident. And just so that the public, our community is aware that every single person, including myself, are equipped with an AED and we have saved many lives, uh, with that. We are normally the first ones on the scene. And due to the ox, the actions of these three officers, they did a phenomenal job in saving another life. I'd like to commend, uh, each of them and I'd like to issue them a life-saving award.
Congratulations, but also so much appreciation and, uh, thanks from our community, uh, that you were able to save these lives, um, and that you jump into action whenever there's a need. And we are forever grateful. So thank you all and thank all your colleagues as well. Congratulations.
Okay, uh, this time I would like to call up Sergeant Anwar Seela. As you all know, we have done a teen police academy now for several years. Um, and before I turn it over to him, I just want to let, uh, you all know what a fantastic job, uh, that Sergeant Seela does each and every year. I know some, some, uh, we've had some, uh, uh, children, uh, from y'all that, that have attended it. We always get excellent, excellent reviews. Uh, they learn so much about what we do each and every day, and I just want to just reiterate, um, the dedication that Sergeant Seela puts in, along with all the officers that come out, uh, and detectives and supervisors to, uh, give the class. So, call up Sergeant Seela.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, just wanted to take this moment to recognize the students who participated in, uh, our fifth annual Teen Police Academy, which was held, uh, last week from July seventh through eleventh. Uh, this year, we hosted a total of sixteen students all across from metro Atlanta area. It's a week-long program which is designed for teenagers age fourteen to nineteen, and has created the strength of the relationship between law enforcement and the young people in our community, while also sparking interest in public safety careers. Uh, during this year's academy, uh, the students gained firsthand insight in different, uh, areas such as, uh, our real-time crime center, which is the first, uh, time that they're able to do that in this academy class. Uh, they did active shooter response training, the North Metro SWAT team. They participated in our firearm simulator, which allowed them to gain firsthand perspective on challenging policing scenarios. And they also, uh, engaged in practical traffic stop, uh, scenarios. Also want to highlight some of the outside, uh, agencies that assisted us with the academy. Uh, the students took field trips to GBI, Chatcom nine-one-one, uh, DeKalb County Jail, and, uh, DeKalb County Police Aerial Support Unit, uh, brought, flew in on their helicopter to show them the, uh, their helicopter. And, uh, Georgia Department of Public Safety also brought over their driving simulator. Uh, just want to congratulate all the students for the commitment and attending the academy and also want to thank our command staff, uh, the mayor and council and all of the instructors, uh, both internally and externally that, uh, uh, dedicated their time that entire week. Um, and, uh, definitely Officer Dobbins and, uh, Officer Hernandez were very instrumental in, in helping with that. Uh, the Teen Police Academy is a vital investment in our young people, gives them an opportunity to understand our industry and potentially shape the next generation of dedicated public safety professionals for our community. And we look forward to its continued success in the years to come. This time I just want to ask one of the students, uh, Mira, to come up and just say a few words of her experience in the academy.
You can just talk. Okay. Good evening, city of Dunwoody, family and friends. I want to start off by saying thank you to Sergeant Seela for creating the Dunwoody Teen Police Academy. And I want to thank our police chief, Mike Carlson, who helps support the program. I want to say big thanks to Officer Dobbins and Officer Hernandez for taking the time out of their week to help out, make this week possible. I want to say thank you to Mayor Lynn for approving the academy to help curious minds like mine give us a chance to learn new things. This academy provided an opportunity for my peers and I to have insight into potential careers for the future. This academy also gave me an opportunity to ask in-depth questions and talk to employees who have pursued these careers. Some of my favorite positions were the crime scene investigators, the K-nines, and the SWAT team. I also noticed my classmates enjoyed being able to take field trips, learn different police procedures and techniques for scenarios, also the free food. Some of my favorite places where we were able to see were the GBI and the DeKalb County Jail and the nine-one-one Chatcom Center. This, this was a way to show how all the different organizations work together to keep our community safe. Another part I took away is from the program was being able to sit and talk one-on-one with an officer and employee and build relationships. This shows that the law enforcements are also human and deserve to be treated like one. I want to thank everyone for their time to come and talk to us about their jobs and what they do, what they do and teach us about their everyday life. Some values I took away from this academy was friendship, curiosity, authenticity, and being part of a community. Something I enjoyed most about this program was how it was not only learning, but also hands-on and being in, in an officer's shoes. Some activ- some activities we participated in were DUI and field sobriety, speed detections, and traffic stop scenarios. Some places we visited taught us how the different factors of law enforcement come together and work together. For example, the GBI learned, we learned how the crime scene investigators can collect DNA or evidence, then it gets passed down to figure out where it came from or where it was used. This, then it is taken to get destroyed. Another example is when somebody is pulled over and an offer needs, officer needs to arrest somebody, somebody, they put them in the car and transport them to the jail. Then the jail takes over and now they are in charge of the individual. One of the, one of my biggest morals is nobody is a bad person, they just make bad decisions. And DeKalb County Jail believes that some people there are there to better themselves and learn from their mistakes. Something I never knew is the seventh floor is also known as a compliance floor, where inmates have privileges or, and more freedom than others because they are compliant and have proved they are willing to do better. They have tablets where they can do school courses, text or call, text or call loved ones, play games, or listen to music. Some of them even move freely around the jail to participate in different activities and work small jobs. Sometimes even the worst of peoples want to become better because they have seen how bad it can get. In August, I will be attending Kennesaw State University where I will major in criminal justice. I'm very excited to see what I will do with my future and what field I end up pursuing. And finally, to my classmates, I hope you enjoyed this week as much as I did. I hope you took out many things away and learned a lot. As you move forward in life, I hope you take what you learned and use it to help others. Even if you choose to pursue something else, you now know many things from saving someone's life to saving, saving somebody's life to how our community helps one another. Thank you.
Thank you, Mira. Uh, I would like to see, some of the students came, uh, to the council meeting tonight, so I wanted to take a photo with them, with, uh, the mayor and council, if you don't mind. Come on up, students.
So I'd just like to take a moment to recognize Sergeant Seela, um, for bringing this fantastic program to Dunwoody and Officer Honey, the officers that helped, because they do this on top of their regular responsibilities. And we're really grateful, um, that they help us build relationships in the community this way. Um, and I was really impressed when I was at their graduation. They were much more awake than when I was at their first morning, on Monday morning. But I loved hearing what they learned and what inspired them and what they picked up on. And I think we have a lot of great future leaders that were in that room regardless of what path they take. So thank you Sergeant Seela and everyone else. Um, there's a change in the agenda, a scheduling conflict, so we will not be administering the oath. Is that right? To Officer Perkins today. I think that's all I have to say, right? We don't have to change the agenda. Okay. Alright, public comments. Ali, I know where you're sitting because I saw you when I walked up. Come on up, you'll have three minutes. Did he hear me? Okay. Oh, okay. I can't see. I thought, I thought I saw him. Zach, would you like to come ahead and go then? You'll have three minutes, sir.
Hi, I, uh, did not have, uh, my queer kickball league game today, so I thought I'd, uh, come swing by. I thought that it'd be best to talk about, um, some queer issues affecting our children today as well as, um, some recent news that, that, that I found out. Um, so, the recent Supreme Court decisions made by the United States have really affected us in, in the queer community, both gay, well, gay, lesbian, transgender, all of us. Um, children are being denied life-saving medical care, uh, in Tennessee in order to, uh, be comfortable in the bodies that, uh, be comfortable in who they are. Um, our history is being taken out of, of schools, uh, allowing, uh, parents to deny their children the ability to see us as human beings. And with the big beautiful bill that just passed, ICE has recently garnered the same mil- the same budget as the Russian military. And we see this affecting our community today. I, from my sources, the re-enrollment rates of Hispanic students in Kingsley, Chastnut, and other Dunwoody elementary schools have declined because these students are scared. These parents are scared of their children existing and having a proper education in this, in this community. They are scared of being taken away from the community that they hold so dearly. I deeply ask this council here right now, I know y'all don't like getting political about these things, but this is affecting our people today. Fam, it is an inevitability that ICE will be in Dunwoody. And I ask, what will you do about it? Because silence is compliance. It is complacency. And I deeply ask of y'all to create a plan or do something and to stand for our citizens, to not be illegally kidnapped and taken away from the community that they love. Equal rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Ali, I saw you walk back in. That's okay, you'll have three minutes when you get to the microphone.
Excellent. Thank you, City Council. Thank you for having me. Um, so a couple of weeks ago, uh, I spoke a little bit more about our finances. I think I went a little bit into talking about treasury bills, looking at what we're doing. We're in the right direction, but could we improve on that to get extra money out of it? Since then, I've actually done a little bit more homework. And so I went actually to DeKalb County and asked for a copy of all the statements of all the reserve funds, and they gave them to me. I'm gonna pause right there because a lot of you are probably looking at each other saying that he just said the cap county gave him his statements, but they did. They gave me all the statements on the reserve funds. And so what DeKalb County is doing is very interesting. So virtually every single one of the reserve accounts are going into the Georgia Fund or the Georgia Fund Prime One, something along those lines. It's sponsored by the state treasury. So I started doing even more research into that. And I could possibly be wasting everyone's time because that actually might be a fund that's only limited to certain entities, municipalities, um, and, and county agencies, might not even be available to us. But what's going on when looking into the underneath the hood is it seems like the cap county are using this kind of, it, it might be wrong to say it's a money market fund, but it's ultimately like an investment group. It's, it's, I think it's like a investment, Invesco, investment group like Federated, somewhat similar to like a Vanguard, Invesco. And so it seems like, again, a lot of speculation here, the state have said, hey, come run kind of some of our reserve funds and we'll allow municipalities to dive into this versus like retail investors or institutional investors. Getting to the point, the current yields on those are around four point five percent. Now I've done a little bit more homework on this and I've looked a little bit underneath the hood and it seems like, um, it's, it's a bunch of different things that they're doing. They're not stock-oriented, they're more like, kind of like corporate bonds kind of thing. And, and this is again, just for educational purposes, it's not investment advice. But ultimately, when digging even deeper, it seems like this fund is backed by the state in some capacity. So there is a level of liquidity, slash a level of protection, slash a level of interest rates much higher than even treasury bills can offer because they're doing those different things, not just treasury bills and, and other type of corporate securities. Getting to the point of everything, all I'm asking is that we take a peek into it. Um, I'm not sure who in the finance department would look into it. I'm happy to chat with them. But it's called the Georgia Fund One or Georgia Fund Prime One, if you Google it. Again, it's, it's a program. It seems like it's offered by the state specifically to municipalities, counties. And I, it sounds like it's insured from them. It sounds like a decently good deal. And if we can move some of our reserve funds into this type of program, and instead of make around three percent, we make around four point five percent, you know, as interest rates move, again, that would be some significant extra cash we could do a bunch of fun stuff with. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, that concludes public comment. If you have a com- okay, I'll need you to fill out a card. Grab a card and, uh, walk up here, introduce yourself and then you can fill out the card. You'll have three, oh, you have to fill it out. Oh, hey, it's filled out. I'm sorry. I missed that. I saw you grab the card.
Good afternoon. My name is Kyle. Um, I'm with the AllSafe app and I'm working in a public-private partnership with Georgia State University and the Technology Innovation Committee for the House of Representatives, specifically Dr. Beckles. Um, the AllSafe app is a way to keep the community safe and prevent crime. We don't have any, um, influence or reaction at all to the way the police handle crime. All we do is re- reply with a mental health response only. And we have a bunch of parents from Appalachia that approve our program, as well as letters of support from all over the state. And because you guys have a campus for Georgia State University here, I was hoping to approach you guys for cooperation in the future on our pilot program that's going to be running this next coming semester in the fall. And I would like to contact you in the future about this if possible.
Thank you. Uh, I can't see who's in the room, but perhaps Jay, if you'll speak to our assistant city manager back there, you can get contact information and we appreciate you coming tonight. Thank you.
All the information is on AllSafeApp.com.
Okay, great. Thank you. Alright, I think that concludes public comment now. Thank you very much. Um, before I go on, I believe there's a scout in the back. We always like to recognize our boy scouts. Uh, if you'd like to say your name and what troop you're with, that would be great. Might as well give you some practice.
Good morning. Hope you all doing good today. So my name is Hector Leonardo Aguirre. Um, I'm with the Boy Scouts of America. Um, if you're familiar with the Brook Run area, that's where we are, Troop four-seven-seven. My, um, what's it called? Scoutmaster is Barry Deutsch. And I'm here for a city council meeting. Um, and yeah, just been in the troop for over two years, joined for when I was twelve, thirteen, for Weeblos One. And from there, having fun and learning new things, so.
Thank you. And you're working on which badge?
Um, it's with communication, I believe.
Okay, great. Thank you for coming. We always appreciate the work that our scouts do in our community with, um, projects and volunteerism. It's a fantastic thing, so thank you for coming.
Thank you. I appreciate y'all, y'all too.
Next up, Eric, is your city manager's report.
Yes, I thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna start with the Parks Department this evening. Um, we have, uh, coming up tomorrow is the King of Pops, Two Bridges Park. Looks like the weather's gonna be nice for that. Also, um, August first, picking the parks. We have Indiana Jones, The Last Crusade. Uh, staff, we spent some time today talking about some different movies that we, uh, that we have in the park and, and of course, a lot of these movies are, um, kind of generational, but at the same rate, we're gonna have that movie on August the first. We have Groovin' on the Green coming up August ninth. Uh, Brook Run Dog Park giveaway on the twenty-sixth of August. And then, uh, September thirteenth, another Groovin' on the Greens. So please add those to your calendars and see if you can attend those events. Um, we also had, we presented to the Sustainability Committee on June the twelfth, highlighting our efforts for, uh, bike racks at the North Schallerford Annex and also educational signs for Brook Run Park Wild Fa- uh, Wildflower Pollinator Meadow. And then, uh, we had the Uncycled Art Initiatives as well. So a lot of activities we continue to push at Brook Run Park. The, uh, and with sustainability is a big mission of the city. Uh, Rachel Waldron received her, uh, Certified Parks and Recreational Professional Certification. The, uh, CPRA certification is a national standard for all parks and recreation professionals. And we have two of our nine full-time employees within the department now hold this certification. So I want to congratulate Rachel on achieving that. And, uh, we're glad that she is our Parks Director. Also have, um, we're reviewing our contracts now for the Brook Run's Veteran Memorial. As y'all remember, you approved that, I believe, at the last meeting, and that is, uh, scheduled to be open this November. We also have, uh, Stage Door Theater, just a little point of information. Uh, serve more than a thousand community members across for its summer camps. And so that is a, uh, here again, it's a great outreach we have there. We also had three hundred youth and adult players participated in Rush Union Leagues and the summer camps and clinics. That's about fifty to sixty-five percent of those are Dunwoody residents. We had Dunwoody Preservation Trust, had thirteen histories, history, um, oral histories during the Juneteenth event that we joint, uh, partner with the city of Sandy Springs. Also, we had three hundred people attend the Picks in the Park Ferris Bueller's Day Off. Sixteen hundred people and for Groovin' on the Green series opener. And also we had Dunwoody Nature Center had over five hundred campers in the first half of the summer. So very active parks program and, uh, also with our partners, plenty of things for our youth to do within the city. Under the police, um, we did have our Operation Brain Freeze continues through July. Uh, children seen by members of the Dunwoody Police Department wearing a helmet are eligible to receive a free ice cream coupon. And thanks to the sponsorship from Dunwoody Ice Cream Shops, we just talked about our Teen Police Academy and what a great event with, that, that we've put on there. And also on July the twenty-second, from five to seven, we'll have our second annual Let's Taco About It. Not about, about it. So we do have that coming up. So, um, here again, going onto the workload and activities, uh, a lot of flock hits. Again, I'd like to point that out, just as I've said many times before, just the use of technology continues to help both our, um, police officers with their jobs and to continue those, those items. The, um, we have also, I'm gonna move underneath Public Works. We have the, uh, the twenty-ninth, which is the perimeter center east path, public open house is scheduled from five to seven. So please make an effort to attend that. Public can learn more about that project. Also, the, um, stormwater structures were completed, uh, last month. For the Edison or Eason to Cherry Hill Path. So the construction work is, is undergoing underway right now. Um, under Communications, we had the groundbreaking for the Wildcat Creek. Actually coming, that's actually coming up, it's on my calendar. For the sixteenth, we'll have that groundbreaking coming up this week for Wildcat, uh, Learning Lab at Dunwoody Nature Center. And also the ribbon cutting for the boardwalk and wetland improvements for the nature center has been pushed back to October. So we didn't move that. So we didn't move that, that portion there. The, um, under our right department here, more under communications, we have our top post, um, for the month for Facebook was one of the, uh, you know, Dunwoody's in competition for one of the best places to work. And also, um, we have the, um, that's, that's an event or, or not an event, but a competition, I would say that we're working on with other, uh, not just cities, but, uh, the kind of organization to try to get that. That's something that the staff and the council, I know we've worked in close partnership there. To, we talk a lot about how Dunwoody is such a great place and we wanted to, uh, see what the morale was overall within the city. And, uh, the, um, the employees did vote it to be one of the best places and it ranked high enough to be within that model. We'll see where we end up on the scale, but we are in the top one hundred. So, um, under community development, living spaces, which is a new furniture store on Ashford Dunwoody Road. It broke ground when you drive out towards two eighty-five, you'll see that on your left. The Georgetown Storage Facility behind Georgetown Shopping Center has topped out and is, it's in the rough end stage. And also the Planning Commission did hold its first public hearing for the twenty twenty-five through twenty forty-five comprehensive plan uh, about a month ago. The council will conduct the second public hearing right here on June, July twenty-eighth. Here again, this is the public hearing. There's been some discussion out there about the comprehensive plan. This is a step towards a required document which must be turned into the state. And it is a guide for future growth and future development within the city of Dunwoody. So please make all efforts to attend uh, that meeting if you have interest in that. The other thing on that, I believe you can also comment, Richard, on the uh, Department of Community Affairs website on that, um, if you care to go to that site as well. The department will also go live on Monday, August the fourth with a new software, Central Square. This is a permitting software that's much more reliable than the current system that we have. The, the, um, office will be shut down for a few days from the standpoint of issuing permits. And we've getting, we're getting notice out about that. The office will be open. It's just permits will be, um, being transferred to the new Central Square software. And also we had a, um, a kickoff meeting with the Georgetown Small Area Plan with a consultant T S W on June the twenty-fourth. And here again, if y'all remember, when you approved the comprehensive plan, you recruit, you approve some small area studies and that was one of those studies that we're working on there. Within economic development, we're continuing to work with the Dunwoody Art Commission and Parks Department to finalize plans for the temporary structure exhibit, sculpture, excuse me, exhibit to be hosted at Wildcat Park. Um, under finance, we completed the annual comprehensive, uh, financial report. Um, that was done, uh, this month. And also that's been some, we've submitted our papers to the Georgia Finance Officers Association for consideration for our certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. So we'll hear about that later this year. Also, just to let everyone know that the ARP and CARES Act webpages have been updated with all activity through the end of April of this year. Uh, I know several citizens like to look at those documents. They are all up to date. If you have any questions, please let me know or let our, uh, finance director know of those questions and we'll be glad to answer those. Under court, we dispose of three hundred and twelve cases and reset twenty-nine. Um, and the court is now able to receive payments using Discover and Amex or their new credit card vendor. And that's been very popular with, um, with the public that comes in. Uh, they like to pay on their credit card. And it's just, it's more convenient. And I believe the majority of our payments are now through that form. And also, um, as I mentioned before, I'm gonna mention it one more time because this is more articulate than what I said earlier. But the city has, uh, has completed the Atlanta Business Chronicles Best Places to Work Contest that was named in the list of twenty twenty-five best places to work in the large company category. That just gives a little bit more information than what I said earlier, but I didn't want to point those facts out. Uh, I'm glad to answer any questions as well as the majority of our staff is here. Um, Mayor, if y'all have any questions, please let me know.
Questions? Anybody have questions? Catherine?
Thank you. First off, congratulations, Rachel. That was an excellent, excellent job. Yes. I had a question about the Joy Foundation mentioned at the very beginning. What playgrounds are the, um, equipment gonna go than the non-verbal children?
Right. The communication boards. Um, so the plan is to have them at, at every playground. We're gonna start Brook Run, Windward Hollow and Georgetown Park. Um, so they're working on kind of the funding piece with what we need. Um, it would be zero cost to Parks Department. Um, not that that would have stopped us, but it's a great, obviously, um, great benefit. Um, so right now they've taken our top three locations. They're working on location and timing and then we'll kind of work through that process on, on installation. But, um, yeah, it's, it's actually resident here in Dunwoody. We're so glad that, that he reached out. Um, and because again, these are one of the things that we've, you know, accessibility is, is very high on our list and there's, there's a lot of things we could be doing. Um, so any of that information when people bring that to us, it's just, it's a great collaboration. We're excited.
Very good. All right. Uh, and let me ask about the solicitor. You've, you said there's a new one. Is it our third solicitor?
Yes, uh, yeah, we do have, and I think also under Laundra, why don't you come up a minute and talk a little bit about, she can give you more details. But yes, we have added another solicitor and of course, Mr. Riley is our, is our primary solicitor and he has hired an additional person and Laundra can give us more information.
We have a total of five solicitors now. So yes, so Mr. Riley, and then there's three associate, there's four, I'm sorry, associate solicitors. Um, one that used to be here regularly. She's kind of moved on. So he's tried to hire some more solicitors to fill in. So it's a total of five.
Do you, uh, uh, does their schedule work? Are they?
They rotate. So, um, there's two here every court session. So there's always two here on Wednesdays, the morning session and afternoon. And then there's another two here on Thursdays in the morning.
Okay. So it sounds like you really have four.
Yes, yes, we really have four.
All right. Interesting. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Joe?
Hey Eric, um, first of all, in the IT department, I don't know Ginger and the team, but, um, what, what impressive background, you know? That's one of these, uh, no news is good news. And you hear about these older, uh, come, um, cities and organizations that have legacy technology and so on and so forth. So we've been very, very lucky and grateful that we continue to be, uh, leading edge in, in those technologies and moving forward and investing in those. I think hats off to staff and leadership for, for you all doing that. Um, the, the, more on the public works, a couple of things. The Peron Center East Path, the open house on seven twenty-nine is that gonna be posted? I'm assuming that we've got a little bit of lead time now to get that out, but do we have a website that we will be able to just share if folks can't attend for that to see what that's about or will be, uh, with maybe a feedback card, comment card or something?
Yes, there, there'll be on, uh, the city website. We're putting up signs, sending out letters. Um, yeah, we're, we're gonna be noticing it over the next couple of weeks and then there'll be a place to go on the website and provide feedback also.
Is that gonna be here, City Hall?
No, it's gonna be at, uh, one of the empty, um, suites down at Park Place.
Oh, okay.
Near the project.
All right. Nice. Um, while you're here, and this is Eric, I twofold, the, the Mount Vernon Tilly Mill, you know, it says you're waiting for G Cap Water and Georgia Power. I mean, where are we really, really on that one? I don't want to ask every week, but you know.
Yeah, well, we did get our last, um, signed agreement and we're just waiting on closing on our right away, but Georgia Power is still in the process of negotiating their easements. Um, their, the schedule was for them to be completed in September. I need to, we need to check with them, see if they're still on schedule for that with their easement process.
Fast forward to next July fourth. And we'll have, I, I, that'll be a good thing, I hope. I'm, I'm sure, I would assume construction is gonna be happening by next July.
Yeah, they should at least be relocating utilities during that time.
Yeah. I mean, I don't want to jump the gun, but obviously when I think about that project and we're gonna have a parade over that route. But that, I mean, we have a long time to lead in.
Yeah, we'll take, uh, deal with it the way we did Mount Vernon and Vermac and, and make sure we accommodate at whatever state the project's in.
And then just another generic last Public Works, what do you foresee, Michael, for the next? I know the Tilly Mill Mount Vernon is a major project. And then we have, I'll say smaller ones, old springhouse lanes. What do you see would be the next in the pipeline? I'm on the website that is of that level that you fore- foresee. I, I know we have the Ashford Dunwoody, maybe it's in right away acquisition, but.
It is in right away acquisition, yeah.
Do you, do, what do you see that's the next one in the pipeline that's gonna be the most impactful for people that use our, our roads? And when do you think that would be in, you know, break ground on where that would be and when that might be?
I, I think the, I think the next three projects that are kind of lined up for construction are the phase two of Ashford Dunwoody, at least part of it, whatever we can get right away wise. And then, uh, the Peeler Path and the Happy Hollow Sidewalk.
Okay, great, thanks. Thank you. Thanks.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Rachel.
Okay, um, so Mr. Alan Mothner is here tonight for, um, the annual presentation for Spruil Center for the Arts. This is something all of our nonprofit partners do. Um, we are so thrilled to, to have Spruil as such a strong partner, um, over the many, many years. That better? Okay, sorry about that. Um, sorry, I forgot where I was. Alan's wonderful. Spruil's wonderful. Um, we're so, we're so thankful for all the programming. Um, it's just a great way for, since we have a lean park staff, just a great way for us to expand our reach with the community through, um, their program and their arts. Um, so tonight Alan's gonna give you their update.
Yeah.
Right?
Is this runnable for you? Is this slideshow gonna work in its current format?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, it looks fine. I'll let you know in about thirty seconds. Um, thank you guys for, uh, having us. Uh, we always enjoy coming. Before you do present, um, last year we presented very early in the year, we had just opened our expanded facility. So we decided to push back a little bit later in the year, this year, to give you, um, a little bit broader view on what's happening with that expansion. And also this marks for us, the halfway point for us in our strategic plan that we undertook in twenty twenty, excuse me, twenty twenty-three preceding the expansion project. So it gives us a nice little view of where we are, um, and how we're doing towards that plan. Um, but tonight I really wanted to share with you, what's the impact of the expansion project? All right, we'll do it this way. There we go. Can y'all still, are we up to speed? Okay. You see all your smiling faces out there. Um, on the impact of the expansion project on our organization and, um, by default on our community at large. So most importantly is programmatic. Um, the new space, as you guys know, has allowed us to vastly increase our programming. Prior to the expansion, um, we were, uh, just completely out of space in terms of offering any new programming. Uh, being able to offer to expand community programming, especially free community programming. Um, and doing other things that was more mission driven rather than our, uh, just general classes. Since we have opened the new facility, we have increased our programming by fifty-five percent. So we added seven studios to our ten. The math works out. It all makes sense. Um, we did intentionally do a slow ramp up in the beginning of twenty twenty-four. When you open a new facility, in addition to the stress of knowing if it's gonna open on time is the idea of operationalizing it. Are the plugs gonna work? Where are we gonna put desks? Are we gonna have enough easels? Are we gonna have enough students? We're gonna have enough teachers, all those type of things. So we did a slow roll into twenty twenty-four with our programming. Um, but our current level, uh, with the gas flowing on the pedal, we're currently offering fifty-five percent more programs. Our enrollment has increased thirty-seven percent. And so this has been a huge benefit to us as a, uh, nonprofit organization. Not only in offering our programming, but able to give back to the community because of those programs. Year to date versus last year, we are twenty-nine percent ahead of where we were last year. So from that beginning little blip of increased programmings, we're now seeing exponential increases. We have so far this year enrolled forty thou, or sorry, four thousand, that would have been a lot. Four thousand five hundred and eighteen students through the first two quarters. That's an increase of over a thousand students versus twenty twenty-four. So a huge increase. Um, even, even as of this morning, this summer, we have sixteen hundred and forty-seven students, which is four hundred and eighty more than we were able to have last summer. That's in addition to another one thousand ninety-seven summer campers who are in our building. So if you come, uh, to the, at the, uh, Cultural Arts Center right now, there's twenty-seven hundred plus student and adults taking classes. We still have another hundred and fifty classes that will begin late July, August, um, and into September as part of our summer quarter. We intentionally stagger that because of space limitations with our campers utilizing anywhere between six and seven classrooms each day from nine until four. Most importantly for our expansion and for, um, for us in terms of being able to meet demand is our waitlist have decreased by sixty-three percent. So we've seen a significant decrease in the waitlist in some of our most popular classes, those being ceramics. A lot of our painting and drawing classes, jewelry. The new studio space has allowed us to double up on some of those studios and expand those spaces. And so we've seen a huge decrease in our waitlist. Uh, unfortunately, that does not transfer to camp. Uh, we have about two hundred and twenty kids on the waitlist this summer, which is a good problem to have, but we're always looking for uh, the opportunity to have more space and to engage more kids in the arts. Our membership has increased twenty-three percent since last year. Again, this is, um, most of our members are, are in it for the discounts and the early signups. Um, a lot of them are more altruistic with their membership, but we have a really great, um, stickiness problem, if you will, at Spruil. Once people find out about us and take a class, they come back. We have so many students that come back semester after semester, year after year, um, and they try different mediums and different classes. So that membership retention for us is a really important metric. One of the greatest things about the expanded space that was done towards the end of the project was the community green space. I know y'all have seen it. Um, we've really begun to truly activate that space. And for us, it's become a gathering point in our community, not only throughout the days, uh, but through our programming that are bringing artists and artists, non-artists alike to the, to the, I keep calling it the education center instead of the cultural arts center. We have two locations, uh, to the cultural arts center, um, to gather. I mean, we, and part of our mission is to foster social connections through the arts. So anytime we have an opportunity to get people to gather in our space, um, we welcome that. So that community green space, the stage has been, um, just a big, uh, plus for the whole community. And lastly, it's helped us in our vision as serving as a true community center based on the arts. And that's a pretty significant difference from where we started. We used to be an art center that was based in this community. And as part of our most recent strategic plan, we're making, um, stride and move towards becoming a community center that's based on the arts. A little bit more detail on our expansion. Um, I mentioned our community programs. I'm sure y'all are familiar with some of them. Uh, just last night, we had a hundred people doing salsa, uh, in the courtyard in the rain. So you can't stop the flow apparently. Um, that's a new community program. This is the second month that we've offered it. Um, and these are all free community programs. This is at no charge, uh, to anyone, whether they're from Dunwoody or from outside the community. Our Creative Connections Program is for, uh, those suffering cognitive decline and their caregivers. Because the caregivers are frequently socially isolated as the ones that are undergoing, um, I'm sorry, ones that are impacted by dementia and Alzheimer's. Our free community art closet, especially this summer, has been visited almost daily. Uh, we restocked that. We recently put about three thousand dollars worth of materials back into the community art closet. And that's for anyone to come in and pick up some supplies. It's good for mental health. Uh, it's good for sparking creativity. Um, and it's really one of the joys of our staff to be able to open the closet up, uh, and help people pick out some materials. We began last year and this year, we announced at our, uh, fiftieth anniversary, our Taste of Spruil Free Community Workshops. We just had four this past weekend. We're on pace to offer fifty of these this year and should allow about five hundred people from our community to attend these workshops again at no charge. Our Fundamental Fridays are an artist-driven program. It brings people in, uh, to our studios where they share work and get feedback from one another. Uh, we have a Friday morning yoga class that we can attest to from. We have a Friday morning yoga class that we can attest to from audience participation. That has been a great program. That's eight o'clock every Friday, again, also free. We held our first Family Field Day in May and have another one planned for later this summer. Our Craft Noon, once a month, is again a place for artists to visit. And I mentioned Salsa Sundays, and we just recently announced last weekend the introduction of mahjong, which apparently is a big thing now because those classes are already almost full. So if you're looking to get mahjong down, apparently that's the thing. We're on it. I'm really proud that we have added a staff member that is dedicated to creating, offering, and running these community programs. And I doubt she's listening, but if she is, she's doing a fantastic job. Her name is Barb Thomas. She joined us last September. And these community programs, we've had more than seven hundred people already participate, not counting last night's hundred, in these free community programs. So this again falls hand-in-hand with our mission and with our strategic plan. Scholarships. So prior to having the additional space, scholarships were tough for us because our classes have already filled. From the seeds of what the City of Dunwoody sponsored for us back in twenty twenty-three, we offered about forty-three thousand dollars worth of scholarships. Last year, we grew that number to sixty-three thousand. So far through June, we've already awarded ninety thousand dollars plus in scholarships. This is three hundred and sixteen people that have come for scholarships in all of our classes and our camps. This is for us something that's vital to what we do. The good news is we're able to award it. The bad news is we're about out of funding. We have some grants and some other things coming up, but our board this year designated sixty thousand dollars out of our budget just for scholarships. We have about fifteen left. So the demand for scholarships hasn't stopped, but we will continue to accept all that apply for it. And it's a very easy scholarship application. They submit a statement of need and an affidavit, and then we get them in their class. Interesting to note, thirteen percent of our summer campers are there on scholarship. So of a thousand ninety-seven students, thirteen percent have attended on scholarship. In terms of operationalizing the new space, which was a big push last year, we did outfit all seven new studios. Two of the new studios, Blacksmithing and Woodturning, have met with huge success with our audiences and offering those new spaces. Our event space has also been well utilized, not only for our workshops and classes, but for meetings and events and rentals. We had a seventy-fifth birthday party this past weekend. The revitalized atrium has also been a great gathering spot. One of our new hires, one of our admins is there in the atrium. So then when people come in and they're looking to renew their voter registration, or go to the library, or find the handweavers that are all the way in the back of the welding, back of the building, she can direct them to those spaces and is also just a beautiful presence of Spruil there in the building. And lastly, as I mentioned, we've added four new staff members in the past year. That is a facility manager. I already mentioned Joanne and Barb. And we recently hired a retail associate at the gallery to focus on merchandising and displays for the shop. From a regional standpoint, Spruil's really gained a lot of traction within the art community and the broader metro Atlanta community. Our recently announced Amplify Public Mural Project applications due July twenty-eighth. We doubled the award this year. It's now a ten thousand dollar award for that program. We are generating interest nationwide for that. We were one of the cultural partners last year at the Atlanta Art Fair. And obviously, our holiday art fair draws from throughout the region. I mentioned our strategic plan. I just wanted to briefly touch on some of our key initiatives for twenty twenty-five that we're halfway through. Some of these are already mentioned. You all are obviously aware from your beautiful screens with those new logos. We did rebrand our logo and all of our materials. The thing that was important for this for us was to also make sure that we sub-branded, as I've tripped on before. We do have two locations, our gallery relocation and our education center. So we do want to have some sub-branding, differentiate those, as well as our events. And at some point in time, if we open studio space for artists, to have that sub-branding as well. We're in the process of updating our website. We're in the process of making additional facility improvements to make the building seem less municipal and more artsy. We have expanded our open studio for access to our classes. Those are for now not just ceramics, but glass and drawing and painting and jewelry and just about anything you can think of. If we offer it, we're also trying to offer open studio. I mentioned our community Open House Days and our Plaza activations with events and programming. And our mention, I've also mentioned our growth in scholarship funds and our need to continue to grow that. Over at the gallery, as I mentioned, we just hired a retail associate. We're in the process of looking at some architectural options for improving that property. We don't really have any proper signage. Richard was kind enough to meet with us over there to talk about some of the options that we might be able to undertake, to work on our signage, so that people know it's not just a haunted eighteen-hundreds house next to Fogo, but there's actually an art gallery there. I'm just kidding about the haunted part. You guys can bite on that. So the people know when they're walking down Ashford Dunwoody, when the trail's complete, or when they're at Fogo, or some of our other places around there, they can come into that gallery. We're also continuing our expanded hours. So we're open till seven now, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and we've added Sunday hours as well. This Sunday, we're doing a SIPs event for our five-by-eight show. We'll have some new work up, and we're also doing some sound bathing as part of that activation. I mentioned our Amplify increased award, and we're also working on increasing our programming on the gallery grounds. It's such a fantastic space. We wanted to make sure that people know that we do more there than just have the shop and the gallery. Lastly, I did want to mention, when I was here before, we had announced our Large Creative Fund Endowment. We recently awarded these grants for the first time. We awarded just over forty-four thousand dollars in grants. This generated, as I'm sure you guys know, a lot of interest. I'm sure you're aware of some of the cuts that have been made to the NEA and the trickle-down that effect has on organizations like South Arts or the Georgia Council for the Arts. We had a hundred and ten applications from thirteen different states, sorry, twelve different states for this. We ended up funding five different projects here in the metro area. The first one is Tomorrow Night at Seven Stages. It's called the Common Stage. Think of the moth, but with objects. As well as some other projects, you can read them here, ranging from murals to activations to performances. And we're really proud of being a part of this endowment and kind of spreading that out through the area. So that's kind of where we are right now with our current year and where we've been in the past year and a half since I was last here. So with that, happy to entertain any questions you have.
Questions? Go ahead.
I have no question, just a comment. Arts and culture make a community. Thank you so much for partnering with the city and making Dunwoody better.
Thank you.
Oh yeah, Alan, just like to thank you for the presentation. Thank you, your staff and your instructors for the great work you do over there at the center. For those that don't know, I mean, I've taken a couple of classes there over the years. They really do a fantastic job. And we're really fortunate to have this right here in the city because it's more than just a Dunwoody program. It's actually a regional program. People come from all over to attend classes there. That's the respect it has in the art community. In fact, I was at the Georgia Municipal Association meeting about a month ago, and two of the people, two elected officials from neighboring cities that I spoke to attend classes at Spruil, and we're raving about it. So thank you. And I'm also really excited to see the impact that the new space has had for the center, the additional classes and the community programming. I think that's terrific. I know that's why we did it and to be able to execute it and have the impact that you anticipated and that we all hope for is great to see. So, you know, it's funny, I saw the salsa Sundays and I was really looking forward to coming. It might be a while before I participate, but I'll be down there to check it out. But thanks for everything you're doing. It's a great program there, and I look forward to what the future has for us.
Thank you.
Joe.
Yeah, thanks, Alan. And I just want to make sure the greater public really knows, know, really understands, pardon my English.
You got my malapropes.
That he'll understands how this whole thing works between the nature center and Spruil and Dunwoody Preservation Trust and so on, right? So a lot of communities do not have this type of great partnerships. A lot of communities don't have these nonprofits and all these folks that are raising money and doing things independent of asking money from the government. A lot of cities, small, mediums, large, have, they run this themselves. They operate the facilities. They hire the staff. They pay for the, all that maintenance and everything, and so on. And so what does that mean? That means that you guys do incredible value add. And ROI is incredible, that when people talk about we're gonna, we have to occasionally spend, occasionally spend public dollars to help your facilities and so on and so forth. This is a fraction of the total cost. If you go up to cities like nearby in Roswell and so on, what they're doing and what that's coming from the tax, tax base of their revenue source, right? So I think it's a great, I'm just, you know, speaking to the choir here, but I think we have to just kind of, I like to let people know, level set that. I have a question, just what, I have a question that I have a second follow-up though, but do you have any needs right now? Are there any needs that you currently see?
I appreciate you asking that. Our biggest need is fulfilling the scholarships request right now. You know, that's incumbent on me as the CEO to raise those funds, but the seed money that the city granted from the ARP funds originally, you know, it was something new in terms of supporting programs for the city and supporting people of need, like at the education centers. We had done a little bit, but not to the extent we have now. And to see those numbers increase by fifty percent year over year, I mean, I think the times are really tough for people economically. I would love to see something programmatically, not just for Spruil, but for all the nonprofits, to be able to support Dunwoody people in particular that might need scholarships to come to our classes or a nature center class or a performance at the theater or something like that. That would be a huge help. Facility-wise, the team does a fantastic job. Brandon in particular is outstanding and services us and texts me back immediately whenever the air's out, which is like every day. So I'm glad that's on the consensus agenda tonight. Unless I just blew it for Rachel. Really, those are the biggest issues. We have some upgrades we'd like to see at the building, you know, some of the windows don't close or don't open that we're looking into and some other things. But Rachel, again, is a huge advocate of what we're trying to do, and I know it's working towards that stuff.
Like from a, I don't want to say long-term, but a medium term, I would like to still keep the conversation moving. I don't remember whether even I was on council when there was a master plan before you guys did your extension there for that property. I don't remember what year that was.
It was twenty eighteen, and that master plan was predicated on the expansion. So now that that's done, I'm sure it can be readdressed, but it was predicated on our expanding on that space first. That, the expansion plans and drawing have been in place since twenty eighteen.
Right. And you know, when people, I wasn't on council at the time, but we learned by going to other cities and meeting and collaborating with folks. When I hear the mayor of Greenville, South Carolina, in a speech to, you know, hundreds of elected and public officials and spoke last year in Sandy Springs, he said, "What's the first thing you do to improve your city?" You work on the property you already own. And I wasn't on council in twenty eighteen, but we own all of that. And in twenty eighteen, I would have been, okay, let's call the development authority. Let's have them generate some revenue. Let's actually build that sucker out and make it, make it happen, right? So I'd like to keep that conversation flowing in the background, how we could look at doing something in the next, you know, five to ten years to really keep it, keep it going. Thanks.
Thank you.
Stacy.
I have just a couple of quick questions. The forty-five hundred registrations, are those unique? Or what do you think of the act, how many of the forty-five hundred, what is it like?
That's a good question. We count butts and seats. So that's, that's what that number is. No, it's definitely not unique because so many of our students take classes over and over again. I have to, I could pull.
I would be, I'd be very curious what the unique is.
I have, I have a lot of spreadsheets, but I have a spreadsheet for that in particular. So let me pull it and delete doops, and I can give you that number.
Here's, because I mean, because I understand the kind of butts and seats, but you know, how many different people rock? And then how many, I know you had total of over a thousand campers, but how many do you have in a week in the building? How many in the building during the week?
It varies every, every week. We have eighty-five through ten-year-olds, so that's four classrooms of twenty. And then we offer two to three, sometimes up to four teen camps, so rising sixth through ninth graders. And those vary in class size, like we're not gonna have twenty kids in a jewelry class. Those vary in class size between ten and fifteen. So in this particular week, we have a hundred and five students. Two weeks ago, I think we had a hundred and forty. So it varies week to week.
And then this one is a very important question.
Yes.
For mahjong, do you play Hong Kong or American?
It's American mahjong. I know nothing more about it than that, and now I'm getting nervous that we're talking about it.
Because there are two unique styles and.
This is American mahjong. And I only know because I clicked on our ad to make sure.
Anybody else? I have a question about the gallery.
Yeah.
And parking. So I think it's fantastic that you want to expand offerings there. And as someone who's a fairly loyal participant in your programs there, parking is challenging. And I'm wondering what your strategy is, especially like the signs for the Duke are still up and.
Yeah.
I don't know what's happening there, but are you gonna work on a partnership across the street or anything?
Not across the street yet, but we actually have a informal partnership with Fogo to utilize their valet. I know not everybody wants to use a valet when they come, but we have an informal partnership with them that, for example, if you come to Sunday SIPs and their Sunday brunch, you're welcome to use their valet. And that's kind of been like a short-term Band-Aid approach, because you're right, the parking is not fantastic. We have our student and instructor show coming up July thirty-first, and I'm sure we'll have two or three hundred people there. We just people, advise people to carpool and use that space as best they can. Did I dodge that question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Try again.
I don't, I don't have a definitive answer.
Okay, so have you talked to Kimco or anything across the, I mean, that's what, I park across the street sometimes.
I'd be happy to reach out to them if you would provide a contact.
Yeah, just send me an email. Just send me an email. We'll take care of it. Thank you. It looks good. Y'all are doing great things.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? Seeing none, that is it. Thank you, Alan. Stacy.
I move to amend the agenda to remove item number twelve, the Dunwoody Cultural Arts Center HVAC replacement off the consent agenda and move it to business item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, by Catherine, any discussion? What this number does that become, Stacy, did you think?
That will become item number thirteen, because then thirteen becomes twelve.
All right, any further discussion, seeing none?
Madam Mayor, I think I'm gonna remove number eleven, the triscapes. I have a couple of questions on that one, if we can make that the next number.
Oh, y'all are getting really into deep math here. That's okay. So just, we'll just make them. I don't even know. They'll go first and second.
I amend my motion to see, to remove item number eleven off the consent agenda. It'll be, and it'll become item number twelve, and remove item number twelve, it'll become item number thirteen.
Under business.
Under business.
Do you accept that amendment? Councilwoman Lotmer, Sixth Amendment. Any other? Okay.
Discussion.
Discussions on these two items.
From a point of order, so I'm assuming, I mean, when you have a consent agenda, we can ask questions on any of the items on the consent.
But.
Okay.
There was an issue with some of the wording.
Yeah, and I think my issue's gonna be more than one question.
It's fine, but there's an issue, there was a, in twelve, there was an issue. All right, any further, I think I called a question. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. All right, so now we're at the consent agenda minus eleven and twelve. Sorry, Alan. And, and the, is there any questions?
Madam Mayor, we do approve, except for those that are, have been removed, either eleven and twelve.
Need a second, people.
I'll second that.
Moved by John, second by Rob. Any further discussion, seeing none? I call the question. All in favor, say aye. Sharon, that passage unanimously. All right, so now we're gonna go to number eleven, which is Michael Smith. And I think Sharon, you'll probably need to read it in this scenario, but maybe not. I don't know.
So the new item number twelve is contract extension with triscapes, triscapes for road and stormwater maintenance, Michael Smith.
Michael, thank you for stepping forward to answer some questions. I'm really trying to wrap my head around this to a certain extent. This is for a contract extension, extension for road and stormwater maintenance.
Right.
What is the total amount and how much is coming out of roads and how much is coming out of stormwater?
It varies from month to month because depending, we have seven people allocated to those functions.
Right.
And they sometimes work together on bigger things. Sometimes they split up, but we look at the work orders at the end of each month and pro-rate, you know, if they did more stormwater work orders that month, they, we bill more to the stormwater. If it's more road, it goes that way. So it, it varies from month to month.
Okay. So it really, in the memo, there was a line that said they would be basically split. And so I wasn't sure if we were doing 50% of the total cost to roads, 50% of the cost to stormwater, but it doesn't sound like that's the case.
No, you know, on average, it might be around 50/50, but you know, it just depends on the workload, but it will be, I think it was 20,000 in the memo for the rest of this year. Uh, and that would, some of that would go to stormwater and some of it would go to the Public Works General Fund.
All right. Cause I, uh, I pulled up the October 28th, 2024 contract extension, which gave a nice overview of what we actually do for this type of work. And it showed that the stormwater was down and I wasn't sure if we were, I don't want to be paying for road maintenance with stormwater funds. I just want to make sure that the stormwater funds are being used for stormwater funds. And it sounds like from your, your explanation that each project is individually billed and then goes to each fund.
Yeah.
That's correct. Okay. So we're not paying stormwater funds for road maintenance.
No.
That answers my question. So it was shorter than expected. Thank you.
I have a question since we pulled it. Does this include right away maintenance or no?
That's a separate contract.
That's a separate contract. Okay. That's it. All right. This is an action item.
Move to approve.
Move by John. Second by Tom. Any further discussion? Hearing none. I call the question. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. That passes unanimously. And I think Sharon, you probably have to read the next one too.
Item number 13 is the Dunwoody Cultural Arts Center HVAC replacement, Rachel Watering.
Good evening. Um, so yes, this is, um, we've recently performed an assessment, um, like we did here at City Hall for the cultural arts center. Those rooftop units, we have seven in total. Um, so what this presentation will go over is what that assessment told us. Um, and I do have a few members from our CPS team to answer any technical questions you may have. Um, so again, just as an overview, um, we've seen an uptick, um, as Alan mentioned, um, needed repairs, um, for art center recently. We've commissioned Farnsworth Group, who also did the assessment here at City Hall to do a high level investigation of the existing system over at the art center. Um, and I'll get into some detail, but, um, overall for replacement, um, of all seven RTUs is recommended due to age and physical condition of, of what we have currently. Um, so RTU's one and two were sold, um, in 2011. Um, typically we see 15 to 20 years life for units like this. They noticed control related deficiencies, um, key control points, unreliable things that we're seeing when we get our facilities work orders. The system not, not speaking to what it needs to, to either cool, cool the room, um, not kicking on in time. And then the other RTUs, three through seven or even older, um, those were likely installed. Some of them we were, weren't sure about just due to lack of information on the system themselves. Um, those were installed, um, probably the late 1990s, early 2000s. Again, this, these have seen, um, even more significant wear due to their age. And again, these, these aligned with the recent work orders we're seeing, um, the sport campers at, at stage door and Spruell are, are having to be a little bit warm right now while we, while we fix this. Sorry, I had some worse pictures here. Um, and like we've done with, with some other larger projects, um, we are looking to counsel tonight for funding options. The three here are what we've seen before. Um, so the, the pricing for all seven RTUs will be $233,101. Um, and the finance has provided a few, um, notes there with, with how those funds look. Those options being general capital, um, the unallocated, um, Schallaford and then as unassigned fund balance.
Rachel, thank you.
Yes. Oh, wait, there's, oh, I see. Nevermind. That's fine.
It's okay. Yeah, it's just the recommendation.
The action item. Go ahead.
Yeah, Rachel, thanks for the presentation. Before we start talking about money, let me go back into the work that was done by the contractors. That building, the whole unit, the whole building as itself is split between Dunwoody and DeKalb County in the sense of the library. There's a lease with zero payments, um, back to DeKalb County, but they need to maintain their building. Did we, did our analysis of the air conditioning of the property we own include any of the units on top of the library?
It did not. It's just, just the section that we, that we want to maintain, the one through seven.
Okay. So the only stuff in front of us tonight is for units only in the cultural center, nothing to do with the library.
Correct.
And the library section is walled off, doored off. They can bake in there when they, when those units, uh, I'm sorry, did I say that incorrectly? Uh, uh, if, if those aren't maintained properly, they would be able to delineate between what's DeKalb County and what's Dunwoody at that point.
Correct. Yeah. So the atrium, you walk in and you're correct, there's the double doors that then go to the library.
Again, I have no knowledge of how those air conditioners are functioning or not functioning. I'm just trying to understand the delineation between the two. Okay. That was my main concern because again, the, uh, I look back, the, the IGA between us and DeKalb was last renewed February 11th of 2013. So I had to go make sure and read those documents and try to understand that we're not paying for DeKalb County's air conditioning. I'll defer to others, but that was, that was the reason that I wanted this issue pulled and we could talk about the others.
Catherine.
My understanding is that we own the entire building. We own the library building and we own the cultural arts building and the library building is rented.
Correct.
That's correct. So if they had a problem with the air conditioning, wouldn't we fix that as a building owner?
So the way, then I'll have to put the exact language, the, the maintenance is there, like the facade of the building. Um, like recently there was a tree that fell. We had to notify them of gutter damage and now it's on their, um, their county maintenance to fix. Um, and when you look at the aerial of the building, you can see where we, where we've done roof repairs over the years is kind of like a white and there's a different color. There's a, as far as maintenance, that falls under DeKalb County.
All of their maintenance is under the rental agreement to take care of.
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. So I find that objectionable because at the end of the day, we own the building. So if they don't get the gutter fixed, whatever damage is damaging our building and we should talk about this soon, just to figure out something, because it's, a lot of our residents are using that library and we don't want them to move the library or bake. So, all right. So on to the question at hand. I feel like we talked about this, but maybe we didn't. Does anybody, we, we did. And so that's why I got, do we remember what we said? The, the amount, or maybe it was something different? Right.
Right. My, my question to city staff is, is there a particular one that city staff favors more than the other?
It was, we did.
Yeah. Is that option one? So I guess is there?
I think that's fine. Option one is fine. It's, it's, option one is fine. Does anybody? I mean, it's, it's $233,000 is coming from somewhere and we have some ability.
I, I agree wholeheartedly and I could argue that the Schallaford property was really for parks.
Yeah, for capital.
So I would take that off the table.
Yeah. And we might as well do option one. So I'll need a motion.
Motion to adopt, uh, financial option number one, impact number one. And, and to approve the actual item, uh, agenda number, whatever it is for Dunwoody Cultural Arts Center HVAC. Motion to move to approve.
I need a second.
Second.
All right. Move by Councilman Second or second by Councilwoman Harris. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. That passes. Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
I think you have to read this one, Sharon, when you're ready.
Mayor moving to, uh, business items. Well, we're already in business items actually, but number, number 14 is a resolution to authorize the execution of a memorandum of understanding for shared police SWAT equipment vehicle, John Gates.
Give us one second. Pull up his memo.
Good evening, council. My, uh, agenda item is a city council resolution to authorize the execution of a memorandum of understanding for a shared police SWAT equipment vehicle. By council resolution, approve a memorandum of understanding by and between the police departments of the city of Shamblin, city of Brookhaven and the city of Dorville, as well as the city of Dunwoody, to purchase a SWAT equipment vehicle for emergency operations and other appropriate uses. The Dunwoody Police Department is part of the North Metro SWAT team, which provides mutual support to one another in law enforcement and emergency, uh, operations. Participation in this initiative will significantly enhance the city of Dunwoody's police department's operational readiness, improve response time and provide critical support and police officers while, to police officers while leveraging regional resources to avoid duplicate, uh, expenditures. The memorandum of understanding outlines the purchase of the vehicle ownership, proportionate cost sharing and other collaborative responses regarding the vehicle and the management of its existence. The North Metro SWAT team is a collective effort. The city of Brookhaven has lead responsibility for the purchase and management of the SWAT vehicle under the collaborative guidance of the four participating police departments. The Brook, the city of Brookhaven will develop a process for the use of the vehicle on a first come, first served basis and other protocols to ensure fairness, access and use by each of the participating, uh, cities. The sharing of the SWAT vehicles shall not constitute the sharing of employees. Each city will be responsible for its actions and any errors and omissions and the conduct of employees, contractors and agents, uh, while the vehicle is, is in use. The memorandum of understanding will additionally renew each year not to exceed a 50-year, uh, total for its use or the vehicle's usable life, one or the other. Further, any participating city may upon proper notice, which is 90 days, terminate, terminate its participation in the memorandum of understanding. In such a case, the remaining cities will provide a percentage share to buy out the departing city at fair market value of the SWAT vehicle at that time. Also, should all cities desire to terminate the memorandum of understanding at any time, the SWAT vehicle will be disposed of by an auction or for, for a fair market value or more. And the proceeds will, from the sale will be the, divided equally, well, by percentage, uh, participation. For Dunwoody, that would be 34%. The cost sharing arrangement. The cost sharing arrangement is for Dunwoody would be 34%. Brookhaven will be 38%, Shamblin will be 21%, Dorville will be 7% and the cost of the vehicle itself is $197,236. The city of Brookhaven will be responsible for the appropriate insurance and maintenance costs of the vehicle. By recommendation, we're looking for by the attached council resolution, approve the memorandum of understanding between the four participating cities. Authorize staff to provide funding for the city of Dunwoody's share of the purchase of the vehicle and authorize the city manager to execute the necessary, uh, documents.
Thank you, sir. Uh, questions? And I think chief might need to be nearby. Thank you. Now go ahead, Councilman Hagan.
Uh, thank you for the presentation. I wasn't sure. Is this a new vehicle? Is this an additional vehicle? Are we replacing the old vehicle? I wasn't a hundred percent sure.
It's a 19, uh, 2022 vehicle.
But we have another vehicle. We have a SWAT vehicle already, do we not? So is this a, is this a replacement for what we have or is this a second vehicle?
Uh, Councilman Hagan, when the Sandy Springs SWAT team pulled out, uh, of the North Special SWAT team, they were in charge and they purchased their own equipment trucks. So when they pulled out, we're out of an equipment truck now.
All right. So we are down a vehicle and we are replacing it for new equipment for what we had previously.
Yes, sir.
So you're telling me then that the, uh, old vehicle's not going on for, up for auction because I really needed a new Bluesmobile at some point, but I guess, all right. So that's not going to be available for auction. All right. Another question I had was regarding the parking. Tell me about the parking of this vehicle. Where's it going to be located and how are we sharing the cost of that parking?
So, uh, right now the vehicle we parked in Brookhaven, um, we are currently working with, um, working with the city manager regarding the annex, um, the storage building that's going behind there. Once everything is complete and been approved, it'll be housed there.
All right. So it will be housed in Dunwoody for the facility that we built specifically for it.
That's correct, sir.
All right. And I guess I'm not too worried about the cost. I guess there was, the cost is minimal, but I'm just trying to understand all the other costs. Was there any talk of allocating that cost? Like splitting it up, I guess that's irrelevant, I guess.
Yes, sir.
All right, sir. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I understood what we were voting on. So it's a replacement vehicle for what we lost. Thank you.
Councilman Seconder.
Yeah, I appreciate that clarification about what it was. So for future, like, we need a little more background in the, in the staff memo. Procedurally, this is an action item versus a discussion, right? We usually.
I chose to make it. This is on me. If you don't like it.
Right.
There's a time.
So, um, this is, I'm just, just hearing about the why. I didn't know the why until you just articulated that verbally. Cause I wanted to note, so we have the funds currently in our budget. Where's this fund coming out of? The budget coming out of this to pay for this?
Operations, according to Mr. Gates.
Sorry, where's it?
Operations.
It's, uh, is it not coming out of our SPOST funding for equipment? Is, is there a, I don't see it in the memo, what fund source we're using from this. Is it in the packet?
Uh, it's not.
So we have, we have the cap, we have the funds, we do have funds and available and it's not going to affect the rest of the year by using this. Uh, is that, is that a correct statement?
That's correct.
So yes, we're going to use, uh, this is going to be an operating expense within the police department, within the general fund. We're going to use the salary savings to pay this as well.
The what savings?
Salary savings for.
Oh, from, because we're lower than headcount than budgeted. I see. Okay. I would, I would have thought it would have been a capital out of SPOST funding.
So we do not own the vehicle, so we cannot, since it's not our vehicle, we cannot.
That's good to know. Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you.
I want to apologize because I thought everyone knew that, um, Sandy Springs had decided to take their SWAT in-house. That's on me too. They, what, they took their ball and literally went home. I have a question along the lines of what John said. I'm a little concerned that Brookhaven is paying all the insurance and maintenance costs. I don't always, I, I think that it might be better if we split those costs. My gut tells me it might be better. I don't know how to work that out there. It's too complicated.
So we do, we do the, whoever houses the unit is responsible for the, for those maintenance. The reason we do it that way is we want to be sure the maintenance is done. We have other vehicles that we own, and that we do all the maintenance on. It's part of, it's anticipated in that cost.
Okay.
And so it is covered from that standpoint, but there's one group that's in charge of that. So I think it's, it's worked, but I know what you're saying because it is a little bit. I'd love to have all our own stuff, but it's better to have it divided up, cost.
Right. So I can appreciate that, and knock on wood, it's not used very much, but our friends in Brookhaven continue to grow, and their ambitions to grow. They're already on the other side of eighty-five, and they intend to do more annexation, I think, as they've made it pretty clear. So it's, are we going to, like, evaluate this over time to make sure that logistically this makes sense for us? Like, I don't exactly know what tools you would use or how you would decide, but I'm concerned that geographically, you know, I mean, it could take, how long did it take you to get here, Tom, today? Like, it could take an hour or more to get to Choa and on North Jersey Hills in rush hour. Right. Well, that's what I'm, I'm saying. My point is, is that Eric, I assume we'll develop some tools around.
Yes, a hundred percent. And there's, you should join it, and it's something that hopefully won't be used that often. When it comes out, we, it's a, it's a scheduled, or it takes a little bit to ramp up to get the unit activated. So where it's going to be housed ultimately, and Dunwoody will help us.
Yeah.
But yes, you, you are correct. The geographic area does continue to expand.
Right. And Shambly, too, wants to go over eighty-five. Okay. All right. Thank y'all. This is an action item.
Move to approve.
Move by Spacey, second by Joe. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Thank you. That passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Gates and Chief.
The next item is approval of purchase for Axon equipment, Chief Carlson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. With the increase of our staffing, as well as our fleet, we are looking to purchase four additional Axon fleet cameras, ten Body One cameras, and ten extra Taser sevens. With the increase of our staffing and just equipment, some of these body cameras and Taser sevens, we need to have as backup. They do fail. We need to swap them out as needed. Same with the Axon fleet cameras. The fleet cameras, the reason why we have those is when we received the ambassadors, we used that equipment and allocated it towards the ambassador vehicles. And then when our new vehicles come in, we're short now. So I'm, I'm requesting that. I did speak with the finance director. For the Tasers and the fleet cameras would come out of SPOS one, and the body cameras would come out of the repair and maintenance software general fund. So the funding is there. We just need this equipment to keep moving forward and staff our personnel appropriately.
Thank you. Catherine. Chief, are these cameras personal or are they shared resource?
They're personal.
They're personal, so every.
Yeah, they're assigned to the officer and the badge number.
Oh, okay.
And then the Axon fleet cameras, they're just the in-car for the vehicles. But we're needing spare vehicles, like one of our K nine vehicles, for instance, is going down. We need a spare K nine vehicle in case one of, their primary goes down, so they can switch the dog over. So the Axon fleet cameras, yes, they are, they're assigned to the officer as well. It's just whatever vehicle they're assigned, and then the body camera is also.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you. John.
Do approve.
Any further discussion? There was a motion by Councilman Henigan and second by Councilman Price, seeing no additional discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we go to discussion items. Michael.
Okay. The purpose of the presentation tonight is to provide an update on where things stand with the Shambly Dunwoody Bridge enhancements that we've been talking about for a couple of years. So I just wanted to kind of show you where the design is at this point and what the negotiated budget is with, with GDOT. We're talking, we're going to talk about the Shambly Dunwoody Bridge, but just as a reminder, we've been coordinating this with the CID, and so the perimeter center Parkway Bridge, which, which is at the end of this, I'm not going to go through it, but we have tried to make it cohesive between the two bridges as much as possible. This is the view of what it would look like in the current, with the current design. The fencing you've seen before, we scaled back the, the pylons at the ends based on the last discussion. The, it's hard to see in this picture. I have another one later, but the road name is on there and the, the city logo. And the city logo is under each one of those little columns. This is the, a view on the bridge, and this brings me to my first update as far as with, we, we sent these plans after our last meeting with council to GDOT for review, and they came back with a couple of comments. And one of them was that they asked us to remove the barrier along the path on Shambly Dunwoody, on the bridge. You know, I don't, I think staff, city staff believes that it should be there, and we're continuing to discuss that with GDOT. It's still, it's still in the cost estimate that you see. So when the final IGA is negotiated, that's when that has to be resolved. But right now, for whatever reason, GDOT staff has said remove the barrier from the bridge. And so that's one thing I wanted to point out to council that they came back with. The, the road, the lanes and the widths and everything hasn't really changed since the last presentation. The, this is just a planned view of the bridge. That, that really hasn't changed other. You see, we still have the barrier notes on here, but and that for, and they're, they didn't comment on taking the barrier off the side, on the one that's on the sidewalk side, where it's going to be between the two bridges. It was just on the path side. Some detail, this is, the details of the columns on the bridge and some of the fencing. The other comment that the DOT had was originally, we had some lighting planned and, and kind of the light blue part, middle part of the column, there was going to be some internal lighting. They asked to have all the lighting, internal lighting for the bridge removed. There would still be streetlights on the bridge, and the city logo could still be illuminated in the, in the street name. But as far as these columns and the lighting and that, they wanted, they have an arts committee, and they asked that that be removed. These are just more details of the, the end columns, and then you have some post and railing details. Go through this quickly, just different parts of the pattern. And I just included, as I mentioned, the perimeter center Parkway Bridge in here. There is a, this is a visual where you can see more what the street name looks like as it's put on the bridge. But with, with the GDOT's feedback, we, they also negotiated what the cost would be, agreed upon cost would be. As I mentioned, the barrier is still in the cost, but that internal lighting is not in the cost. And that's included in your packet with the contingency that they require for uncertainty and escalation and all that. The, the proposal or what's shown here would be about two-point-one million dollars that they would ask the city to contribute for these improvements. So that's the presentation, and I'll answer any questions.
So I, I think one of the answers you need from us is the barrier, right? What kind of guidance do you want from us on that?
Yeah, yeah, I think if the council feels strongly about having the barrier, which I think most everybody probably does, we'll go back to GDOT and say, look, our city council says we have to have this barrier. And if we run into any more roadblocks, then we can escalate it, but we'll go back to them with that message.
John.
But the barrier that was there previously was really planters. So might be, was it a weight issue? Was it other issues that's not really the barrier? The barrier is on the, on the sidewalk. So could they just have that same barrier type on the path?
We, we need to flesh that out, but I, that would be, you know, input that we would need from council, too. Is the planter important to you or just some type of barrier?
Yeah, the barrier. I mean, if they're saying no to planters, but yes to a different kind of barrier, I think we would be okay with that.
Correct.
It's a safety issue, not a tree issue.
Correct.
I mean, a tree would be nice, but I think it, they're not doing that anymore. Uh, Tom or Rob?
I was just gonna a, agree, you know, safety, but one of the reasons why the planters were put up was for aesthetics, just to make it look nicer. So ideally, if we, if they want another kind of barrier, it would still be something where we would have some flexibility to make it less.
An attractive barrier.
Not, or, or not unattractive. I don't know that you can make a barrier attractive, but you can make it not unattractive.
Right.
I'm, I'm going to stop talking.
Well, no, no, no. I understand what you're saying. You know, on the fifth, is it the Fifth Avenue Bridge downtown with Georgia Tech? The landscaping has turned out to be a big problem because it's so heavy as stuff grew, so. Okay, Joe. Uh, Tom.
Uh, yeah, thank you. So I have a couple of questions. So with the medallions, you said, like, the lighting element, like GDOT had a design committee. So was that a a design decision to remove that, or is that a safety decision to remove the lighting?
It wa, it was a, it was decided by the arts committee. I don't know exactly what the reasoning was. Because there are examples of other bridges.
And that was my, there are plenty of bridges that have lights on them, similar to this, or even much more pronounced. And I, I'm not sure that why GDOT's art committee, you know, if we're paying an additional, well, I'll get to the money part of this later, but if we're paying to do enhancements, why we don't have a little bit more, why do they get to veto what we want to put in there? That's a little bizarre to me.
Well, ultimately, they will on the bridge, so they, they do have the final say, but I mean, if the council wants to push back on the art, on the lighting part, too, we can, we can do that.
Okay, and wh, while I, I mean, I don't know what I want to, I, I like the lights. I thought that was, that's really the most attractive element of this. I mean, which I'll, again, I'll get to the money part in a second. While I'm on the, on the columns, I had a thought when I was looking at the, the renderings, and I don't, it's just me, and again, this is more design than anything, but like the, the the medallions that have the, the city of Dunwoody logo, we, we actually just introduced the, the gateway signage, and my thought was to be consistent, like, because this is a gateway to the city in essence, having that stainless steel as opposed to a colorful logo like this. I mean, I can't imagine, I don't know, that shouldn't add any significant cost to this.
So you're, you're saying stainless steel letters?
I, my thought was it's consistent with the, the gateway signage we just put in, and having that consistency, if, if we're trying to establish a consistent brand for people entering the city, that was just my only thought. It's not a deal breaker for me. It's just something I wanted to toss out there for consideration. I thought it made sense, and I also thought it'd be a little bit more attractive on, on a bridge like this, because when you, when you start adding in all these different colors, you know, keeping it simple and just, you know, black and stainless, and again, just a thought.
Go ahead.
Yeah, and, and so I'll get to my last point, and then I'll just turn it over, and I'm going to be honest with you. For a two-point-one million dollar price tag, I'm completely underwhelmed with the enhancements that we're getting. I, I can't understand or really personally justify that additional cost based on the upgrades we're getting. I mean, I, I was one of the people that pushed for this. I thought it was, it would be nice to have a, a, a bridge that had some enhancements and made a statement and kind of identified, yeah, you're in Dunwoody, you're in someplace special. But a lot of the initial elements have been stripped out for cost reasons, which I understand, but what's left, and to me, doesn't justify what is a pretty enormous price tag. I mean, they're going to have to put in sidewalks and fencing and all this stuff anyway. Yeah, I know there's a little bit of a upcharge for some of this stuff, but two-point-one seems pretty steep.
Yeah, I, I mean, part of it, you know, there's a fifty percent contingency on it, so that's, you know, that's almost seven-hundred thousand. And, and they actually asked for more, and that's negotiated down. So, I mean, the way, in the end, the way it's going to work is, I mean, GDOT's agreed to this number, but you know, in the end, they're going to say this is what we require to put this in our contract, and it is up to the city whether we want to fund it or not.
That's things.
Go ahead.
So when does the money due to GDOT? When do they want this check?
That, that's a good question. I mean, there, it has, when we get the IGA, which should be coming anytime now, that's going to spell all this out and sign on the dotted line. It should say that in there. A lot of it depends on the timeline of their project. I think they have said they don't necessarily expect the money day one when they, you know, when the IGA is signed, we can, we can put it out a little bit. Just for information, I should have mentioned this earlier. Our current SPOS budget includes two million budgeted out over through twenty-twenty-nine to, to fund this. So if, so if they ask for it sooner, we'll have to kind of move some things around to cover it, but right now, it is, two million is programmed in our SPOS budget.
I think, well, so the next time you come back with an IGA, we'll, we'll know when is the payment due.
Right.
Because I, I'd be like, can we put in an escrow or something and, and make interest on that? I mean, just set it aside. Can we just say, we'll give it to you. We guarantee when you guys come around eventually and building it in the next ten years? I just don't know, right? I'd rather.
That's, I mean, I'm, yeah.
You know?
I mean, I thi, I think the challenge, I'm not a visual person, and I can't tell you, like, where the money's going. I think it's pretty, we have to do something with this opportunity. And so if this is not it, then we need to start over. We need, or we need to figure out what it is that we're comfortable spending, what our priority is, because the PCID is going to do their bridges. And at a minimum, it needs to be branded, I think. But I mean, we need to figure it out, because they will put up a fence. It'll be a wire fence, most likely. So we, we need to figure it out. Also, just like I've been dealing with with the Georgetown pool, the timing of this is so incredibly questionable in my mind, right? Not the timing of when they might give us the contract, but the timing of when they might actually start construction, because originally, this was going to be an advanced project, and they decided it wasn't going to be. Is that still correct?
Correct.
And so, and the develop, it's the end of twenty-six before developers picked, correct?
Right.
At the earliest, I think, in the twenty-six, beginning in twenty-seven. And then that developer gets all this time to make their changes and to make their decisions before they even announce which, which end or where they're going to start. So it's at a minimum a few years away.
The actual construction.
Yes.
Yes.
And at a maximum, a lot longer than that, depend, like, if they start all the way in Tucker or Cumberland or something, right?
Right.
Okay.
Well, do we, do we lock in, though? Do we prevent against inflation, and we commit to a maximum money? Is, is that worth, is that worth benefit now?
They're going to want the IGA, I mean, they said this summer, but we're still waiting on them to give us their draft agreement. But they're, they're going to want that this year. So at the point, we approve that, and they sign it, that, it's locked in at that point.
Okay, so.
Doesn't necessarily mean the money has to change hands at that point. But the, the cost and what they're going to do is going to be locked in.
So it's locked in, even though, okay, so if they build it in ten years and it costs them twice, we're still only in the hook for what we've maximum committed for.
Yeah, assuming that this current project can, you know, is moved forward, yeah.
And by the way, I don't know about the Dunwoody on all three. If we look at just uh, uh, value engineering, the three pillars have Dunwoody on them. I'm, I'm looking at the ones that Sandy Springs have along four hundred, Pitts, Roberts, those are brand new. And I think there's just Sandy Springs in one. I mean, I don't know. It's just one there. Yeah, so you know, there's potential savings there. It still looks nice. And back to the, um, just the whole not, unseparated buffer barrier thing, right? I mean, we have, they did it. These new bridges that Georgia DOT have approved, you know, Pitts Road just has a, 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 a nice barrier separated.
a, 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 a nice barrier separated path. They put a wall, Roberts has one that just was built in twenty twenty four. Encore Parkway is beautiful in Alpharetta, you know, it's got, it has, it has, um, you know, it's, it's lovely. The street lamps are inside the barrier and they've got little, um, you know, landscape inside the barrier. It looks very nice with some greenery, so. And then the Bill Kennedy Way on I twenty, that's a Jersey barrier on a cycle track. So I'd, again, I'd like to see if they come back and push back about that barrier separation thing, put it in writing and tell us why, and then say, what about these other four?
John?
I remember the conversation, we started out pretty elaborate and we've scaled it back and scaled it back and scaled it back, almost to the point that, you know, we all said chain link fence is probably not gonna cut it for Shambly Dunwoody Road, give us a, a, a tier above that. And now we have a two million dollar project. If we were to look at this, Michael, what would be value engineer taken out? Is the lighting necessary for all the pedestrian lighting? Is there anything that could be little lit, lit bollards at the foot and then it's just a very, very minimal lighting? If there's li- lighting a lot, you know, that has to be there. Tell me, if we were to push back to G dot and say, this price is, this project is too much for us. We want to scale it back to the bare bones minimum, give it another, you know, sharpen your pencil, remove some of it to where it's a little better than chain link fence, what would they do for us?
Well, I, I think first of all, we need to decide about that, the internal lighting, column lighting, because that's not in the estimate right now. That's another hundred and fifty thousand.
As far as I'm concerned, it, it's not needed. To me, it's, I just want bare bones, functionable with it being not industrial grade. But that's me.
Yeah, I mean, a big, you know, the two biggest costs are the, the fencing system and the painting of the bridge. So.
And how much was that?
The, how much was that? Railing system is six hundred and forty thousand and the, um, painting is five hundred will include, yeah, all the painting is five hundred and forty four thousand.
Am I reading the painting right, that there's a markup and then a contingency?
Yes.
All right, so it's a fifty percent markup and then on top of that, a fifty percent contingency.
So I think I'm supposed to see. I would say that there's also room for a conversation with G dot about this. We could charge them for our time and energy that this construction project's gonna cost us. I think also I'd like to see PCID's plans, like I don't want us to be so far out of alignment that we don't look like one city. I think that's actually really important. And so.
Yeah, the, the CID, their, their bridge, of course, they're not rebuilding their bridge, so it's, it's a little, it's even simpler than ours because it's a retrofit, the Permer Center Parkway Bridge. And it's, you can't really see.
What about Astrid Dunwoody?
No, they're not doing, they're not planning to do anything to Astrid Dunwoody.
Why is that? They're not putting any improve? Okay, I thought the divergent diamond was gonna be replaced.
Well, that's a separate project. It's not part of this, past this project. So Permer Center Parkway Bridge, they're gonna be putting in the managed lane ramps. So they are doing, they're not replacing the bridge, but they're doing some minor changes to the bridge itself. And so what the CID is looking at is the same type of de- decorative fencing. The, the road name on the side of the bridge and lighting and that, the, like, well, it already has lighting on the bridge. So really, those are the two things they're looking at is the, the same type of fencing and the naming of the road.
So it sounds like though that we're being penalized for the bridge being rebuilt, when we didn't ask for the bridge to be rebuilt. And we should get the same pricing as if the bridge was already there, like the fence is the fence. Like if tomorrow, we said, we're not waiting because we waited on a sidewalk forever and we didn't build it and because you were building this project and ten years later, you haven't even started. But is it not reason, so we want to go ahead and put the pretty fence in now? Because we think it could be another decade before you take this bridge down. Why should we pay extra because they're reconstructing the bridge? I can see why if we wanted to paint it, but also they're reconstructing the bridge. Why should we have to paint it? Why should we have to pay to paint it?
Well, they, their, their bridge won't be painted. I mean, it'll just be standard concrete and this is like a, basically you're painting the concrete.
Okay, but to the fence, to the point of the fence, it seems to me it shouldn't cost any more than what PCID will pay for the one, two bridges up, because they're not taking, I mean, we didn't ask for this to be rebuilt.
Well, I, I mean, yeah, PCID is gonna have to pay for their fence.
So do you think theirs is gonna cost the same as ours or are we be charging?
On a per foot basis, there's, their board already has actually had a discussion about how expensive it's gonna be because that bridge is really long, the Permer Center Parkway. So the cost of their fencing is pretty high because it's so long. Uh, but.
Fencing company? I mean, because of the content, the contingencies are ridiculous.
Fifty percent is, is, it's insulting to another company.
But it's, but it's fifty percent and then fifty percent.
Well, the, oh, it's on the painting. It's just fifty percent. And they're, you know, they're they're hedging their bets because they, they don't want to get stuck paying anything extra and they, they don't have their prices yet. And this might not be built for four years, five years.
So what's the ex, what's the reason then for their rush for this stuff? If, if we don't even know when construction's gonna start? Cause this is not, is this part of the developer's deal?
Yes, they, they need, they need the IGA to know what the city wants and what we're gonna pay for, so they can include it in the developer's final. So they can put it in the developer's contract.
Tom, did you something?
Yeah, just another question on it. So with the fencing, do we know for sure, like, the price they're charging us for the, the upgraded ornamental fencing? Is that, is there a delta in there between what they would have had to pay to put up just standard fencing?
I can confirm that.
Because they're gonna have to pay to put up a fence anyway. Are we paying full retail here? We shouldn't be, we should be paying at worst, the difference between what they would have to put in versus what we're asking them to upgrade it to.
He- here's another, um, question that you probably don't know the answer to. So if they weren't gonna rebuild this fence and we said to G dot, hey, we would love to put up a decorative fence and paint it and put up some signs. Do you think they would let us do that?
We would definitely have to, to get a permit or permission. I think if the bridge was designed that way originally, that they, we could get their approval to do it.
That's a roundabout way of me asking if can we wait twelve years and they build this and then the council at that time say, hey, we've got this SPOS budget. We would love to improve this bridge you built to make it look pretty and pay whatever the cost is at the time, you know, if it's seven hundred thousand dollars or a million dollars or whatever it is, less than the number they have here.
Uh, I think it's a possibility.
Can we also find out what they paid in Sandy Springs for those bridges? Could we get those numbers too? I mean, yes, I, I didn't mean it like, can we, could we, will we?
Yeah, our consultant that negotiated this worked on the Sandy Spring Bridges too, or some of them, so I'll, we'll, we'll get those numbers.
Right. I don't think we've helped you very much.
What do you need from us?
We're gonna push back on the barrier. I, I'm not sure where we stand on the internal lighting in light of the cost discussion.
So who, who pays for maintenance and operation of the lighting? Would they, would G dot be paying for that?
For the things that we add, like, like the painting, they're gonna say that we have to be responsible for that in the future.
So if, if we really want lighting and we're gonna be responsible for lighting. Yeah. Yeah.
So, so no on the lighting is?
I think will there still be light poles? People actually do walk across that bridge to go to the grocery store and back and the hotel. But there'll still be lighting, just not our internally lit.
It's just the lighting on these, in, inside of these columns.
My main concern is that we have a pretty fence and a big Dunwoody, so that's, you know, for me, I'm pretty simple. Like that, so I, I think at this point, I think you ought to have a conversation with them again.
Can, can we get the prices from Sandy Springs and doing Pitts and Roberts? They just put them in there, we can drive by there, take a look and see what you like about them. And if they got light, let's just find out what they cost, right? Cause I, I look at this from, yeah, I, I get the financially fiscally conservative, you know, let's just get it done. But this is gonna be around for a long, long time and it's gonna have impact and it is telling a story and it's creating a sense of place a bit. You know, and it's saying, here we are and we're part of our community, so I, I think art is good and so let's see what Sandy Springs.
I also think, sorry, I, the, the question of are we being charged full price or being charged a difference in what they would have to do versus the improvements, I think that's, um, that's a really good question to ask as well.
And then I think the, the final question is, I mean, as far, I understand we're trying to bring the cost down as much as possible. But as far as overall amount that you want to spend or, or we, is this in the ballpark?
I think the problem isn't the amount, it's what we're getting for the amount. So really, if you back out the seven hundred thousand dollars contingency and the fifty percent markup in the painting. Right? Am I doing that right?
It's fifty, some of it's twenty.
Okay, but you know, you're probably talking about a million dollars and markups for nothing in return. So, so I think that, that can be, I'm supposed to be there tomorrow. I think I have a meeting down there.
And what would it look like without paint? Cause if we paint it, we gotta repaint it every ten years. An hour a dime. So what does it look like without paint?
Gray concrete.
It's, right, but it, but the thing is, is if we were getting two mil-, what we perceive as two million dollars worth of value out of this, it would be no question, but we're really only paying a million dollars. But we're paying two million dollars, we're barely getting one million dollars worth of improvements. So that's where we stand, which isn't totally helpful for you, but we can continue this dialogue.
Because, correct me if I'm wrong, if like, it, it's a contingency, so if we don't use it, we, it's too late to get something else.
Done to the.
Right?
So, so this, the contingency, we won't have any control over. I mean, it's, it's basically G dot's way of protecting themselves from losing money on this is what it is, so it's, it's just a markup for uncertainty.
But, so if we're saying we're good with two million dollars, but we're only getting a million dollars worth of stuff and they don't need the contingency, it's too late to put that million dollars back into it to make it look better, is that cor-
That's right. I mean, what, and I don't, you know, I don't think that they're gonna move much on the contingency. They've been pretty consistent and everybody's complaining about it. The other cities, like the markup is huge, but that's, they've kind of stayed with that.
Well, you're also saying that if for the million dollars worth of work we're getting, if we don't spend two million in the future, we don't get the million back.
That's right. I, I, that's what I'm saying, that contingency, we don't have any control over, it's just going to G dot as part of the deal.
So you kind of have some clarity.
Yes, we'll, we'll have to come back.
The extra million dollars, I think that's a huge problem, so. Okay, thank you. I think it's, it's, um, Michelle gonna do this, okay?
I am Michael today.
Yeah, okay. I did warn you that discussion was gonna take a little while, Michelle.
Hey, good evening. Um, I am here today to present the award for, um, the construction contract for Old Spring House Lane, Cherokee's Path. So, um, this path is identified in the city's trail master plan as P eleven. You can see it highlighted right here. Um, and, um, it is, uh, making a connection. This will make a connection with Shambly Dunwoody, the path along Shambly Dunwoody, Dunwoody Road in Georgetown area with a feature top end trail, which you can see as, um, W one. This is just, um, some pictures of the existing conditions along the corridor. Um, looking east, the front, the first picture is looking east in front of the Waffle House as you approach the intersection. The roadway becomes a three lane section. Um, there is one eastbound and right turn lane, one left turn lane and one westbound three lane. Um, the next picture is looking west at the two lane section. So with the completion of the Georgetown Gateway Project, um, it created a short gap, um, a path gap. Along Old Spring House. So this project will construct a path from Shambly Dunwoody Road to the existing path that was constructed by the developer at the Georgetown Square. Um, the project originally proposed to construct a twelve foot path on the south side of the corridor. Additionally, the project will, um, would narrow the eastbound lane and provide drainage improvements. Um, in the big documents, this is referenced as the project's base bid. So, um, in order to address some ADA, um, standards and improve existing infrastructure on the north side of the corridor, um, an alternative was added to the project that included the base bid. Um, along with replacing the rolled curb and reducing the westbound lane width, um, providing drainage improvements and reconstructing the sidewalk on the north side to meet ADA standards. So, um, I did want to point out that there is an existing section in the middle that is, um, a path that is already constructed in front of Dunwoody Trace. This was done by the developer, so this project will retain that existing section of curb and gutter and path. The invitation to bid was advertised in May of this year. The city received seven bids, um, all were deemed to be responsive and responsible. The low bid was submitted by sole construction for both the base bid and the alternative bid. Um, staff is recommending the award of the construction contract for the, um, alternate bid in the amount of eight hundred and fifty five thousand seven oh seven with a ten percent construction contingency and fees for construction management and quality control testing, um, for a total project amount that will not exceed a million dollars. Um, there is, um, funding allocated for this out of this SPOS funding for one million eighty thousand. So I will take any questions.
Questions? Joe?
So, yeah, it's the eleven foot lane versus ten foot lane vehicle, motor vehicle travel lanes, it's in the specifications. And, um, you know, I know we have, uh, we've done traffic calming in neighborhoods like North Peachtree and Kingsley and so on. When they have those curb to curb lanes, woods are quite large. Uh, and I know we have some kind of, some guidance, uh, regarding lane widths when we're producing, you know, whether it has marta on it. Is it two lane or four lane? You know, what is the, you know, what's, what's, what's it look like? So this is a neighborhood road, neighborhood street, it's sign posted at twenty five miles an hour, there's no marta on there. So, um, the vehicle lane width, um, can, can we consider entertaining, reducing that vehicle lane width? It's in eleven feet right now and going to ten feet.
So you are correct, it is not a marta route. I mean, it is a mixed use area, really. It's, um, it's partial residential, partial commercial. So that was really kind of the, um, the factor, like there will be truck deliveries, um, and other vehicles so accessing those commercial properties, um, so the designer felt like eleven foot would be the preferred, um, lane width. Um, you know, a ten foot can work in this area, it would require, um, a revision by the designer. I'm a contract amendment for the design contract.
I'm just curious how, again, I know we don't, there's, there's subjectivity when it comes to specifying lane lids, right? It's just, to me, it's just street calming, traffic calming, it's, it's a safety thing to go from eleven to ten.
So on this stretch is a large independent living fifty, but it's. but it's elderly people and that is my neighborhood and I would say on a daily basis, there's probably a fire truck that goes to the Dunwoody Pines, I think it's called. At a minimum, an ambulance, which I know is smaller than a fire truck, but a fire truck because they are generally our first first responders. And so that is a consideration. And I don't I we're fixing the sidewalk. I don't know what we would do with the extra, what would you do with the extra two feet?
You would make a bike lane.
You draw. You have a bike lane.
I would put landscape. I I would add it into the landscape buffer between the curb where the motor vehicles are and the multi-use facility. I would I would have a wider landscape buffer separation.
Catherine, did you have something? Okay.
So this is, I mean, we're talking about a really short section and and I think that's something to just point out. I think it's like maybe like three hundred fifty, four hundred feet max. You know, if it was a corridor and it was in a just a strictly residential area, I think that would be, you know, those are some of the factors that we look at.
And also the storage facility that we approved, the access to it is down this road because there's no access. Oh, no, I'm wrong. It's through Kroger. It's through Kroger. Okay, go ahead.
And you are reducing though. It's gonna be from existing today. It will still be reduced.
Yes, thank you for reminding. So it is an extra wide pavement out there. It's probably like thirty feet of pavement. So we have already reduced the lane. I mean, they're putting in eleven foot lane, so they reduced it to twenty two feet. And a lot of the thinking was like, we're going from this really wide section. And when you reduce, you have to transition. It can't just be, oh, you're at there, you know, thirty feet and now you're at twenty two. There are long lengths of transition that you have to do. And so the designer considered that and was trying not to make it because it's such a short section and not make it super complicated or difficult and thought and felt like the the eleven feet was the appropriate width in order to kind of balance that transition length.
Just one other question here then. So if if we don't make physical changes, just paint the lane lines narrower. I I don't know, would that work as a safety feature, but still give you extra pavement for a truck or a fire truck that would have to go down that would just you know, kind of bleed into that kind of painted shoulder more, just thinking out loud here. I don't know if it's worth a discussion or not, but to me, that's kind of an option if it's the kind of thing that works.
That would be at council's discretion. I mean, we could definitely do that. I think you're gonna have these little weird sections of one foot on either side that kind of, you know.
We have to, are we, obviously, we have to repave the road in that segment, right?
Yes, we are. Go ahead.
I I would say I understand where Joe's coming from, but having driven it yesterday, when we say thirty feet of pavement, some of it is might not be called pavement in the condition it's currently in. But I I understand what you're saying with like the narrow and I appreciate what the what the designer did and and what you're saying, so I'm I'm fine with it.
I have a question for you or Michael, which is, is what are the underlying stormwater conditions under these this road? Because there have been breaks and clogged drains and I hate to not address, I mean, is that something that we should be concerned about?
I believe our stormwater team has actually gone out and they've done some investigation and we are doing some improvements as a part of this project as they went out and CCTV'd and looked at some pieces of that.
So what about sewer and drinking water?
So you're talking about. Working on their repairs and and Mike, I don't know if you know the update, but I believe that they, we've been working very closely and inspecting their work. They have gone back a couple of times and had to redo some things and that's probably the state of repair you were talking about in the road, Stacy. Yeah. But so we are still working with them and getting the repairs done appropriately.
But but when we before we start, that will all be completed and signed off, like we're gonna be confident that they're not gonna have to dig up the road the next day or the next week. I mean, as much as we can be.
As much as we can.
I mean, is there a permanent project? They, I guess my question is, is there a permanent project they should be doing?
That was the permanent.
Oh, that was the project. Oh, dear. Okay.
We're working very closely together and those areas where we are doing projects, they are coming in and doing their projects it before us. And so that was the permanent project, yes.
Okay. All right, we'll see it again. Thank you. All right, last but not least, Lollanta. Right. Somebody has to be last.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here before you in order to request to renew the service contract with professional probation services. They have been our probation provider for the last five years and their contract expires July thirty first of this year. They have continued to provide excellent customer service to our defendants. They have great probation officers. We have good customer service ratings with them. Offenders seem to be happy with the service that they provide. Their contract, like I said, is up this year and in renewing, they are asking for an increase. So probation is an offender pay service, so that fee is not passed on to us. It is passed on to the defendant. Currently, for the probation service, defendants pay forty dollars a month to be monitored on probation. There is a, we've worked into the contract years ago that there's a two week grace period that they provide to defendants. So if a person comes to court, they're not able to pay on that day. They are given two weeks to pay without being charged that forty dollar monitoring fee to be on probation. That monitoring fee also includes conditions that a defendant might have to complete a defensive driving class or take some type of death and shoplifting course. So again, that fee is to monitor them on the service. We have pay only probation. They only pay that for the first three months that they are on probation. So if a person's on probation for six to twelve months, they're only paying that probation fee for the first three months. So the increase they are requesting, again, it's forty dollars a month now. They are requesting to raise that to forty five dollars a month now. And that is the only significant change in the contract this year. So staff recommendation is to renew the professional probation service contract to ensure continued effective, efficient delivery of probation services to the city, thereby providing public safety and offender rehabilitation.
Questions? John?
First, thank you.
Thank you.
I remember working with you early on this whole probationary thing. There was predatory lending, predatory actions being taken against the people put on probation. So we've worked out the system for the three month limit. This the prices, I'm very happy with the services. I'm good to approve this. So thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for keeping this as a fair and equitable and just system for those that we serve at our court system. So thank you.
Thank you.
I was actually, you brought up the, one of the points I was gonna bring, which was just anecdotally, have you got any feedback about people, you know, being able to pay or not pay these fees?
Usually people are able to pay the fees. They're definitely happy about the two weeks that they're given prior to you know, being charged at additional fees. So the percentage rate is pretty high as far as people completing what they're supposed to do on probation and paying the fines. There are a few that don't, obviously, but again, we have revocation hearings where we bring them back and we convert the fine into community service a lot of times. So if a person's not able to pay, we're not gonna make them pay or send them in jail, send them to jail because they can't. We will allow them to do community service and we will define.
Excellent.
I'm fine with this.
Consent, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next public comments. I have two cards. Zach you'll have three minutes.
Uh, you know, I just wanna encourage this council to continue to to fight for equal rights and justice in in this community. I mean, it really starts all the way from the beginning of Dunwoody's history and the injustice of the genocide and exile of the Lower Creek resulting in the eighteen twenty one Treaty of Indian Springs. We also have the exile of Cherokee. The Cherokee Nation from just above the river, they likely had much more of a cultural influence in the W area. With the land lottery resulting post that women were really prohibited from owning land here in Dunwoody. If you're, if a woman who specifically had to be a widow got land here in Dunwoody, she would likely not be able to repay, to pay the nineteen dollar land grant fee. And if she ever got remarried, she would then immediately lose any property rights. It was only until after the, well, even going back, we have John Dunwoody coming with Roswell King and establishing a large slave plantation above the above the Chattahoochee River, which is what, which is where Roswell is today, his son. Charles A. Dunwoody, who fought for slavery, is named after this town. We have, it was not only until after the Civil War that women were able to own land separately from men. Specifically married women. And and Dunwoody's economy was reliant on slavery. Specifically because of the Dinkler Railroad, which is where what the Roswell Railroad is, which lines I believe Ash, not Ashford Dunwoody, but whatever. We're at Dunwoody Villages today. There there are families who own slaves like the Johnston's and it is likely that around the graveyard where the Johnsons are today, there are unmarked graves of of enslaved people. The, because the economy was continually reliant on slavery, the Dunwoody resulted in, Dunwoody mainly became a sharecropping community, which the land over there was a sharecropping community owned by the Spurles and the Wares owned most of Dunwoody. We also, our Jew, our Jewish community exists here today because the because after the Great Depression, the Wares became bankrupt and the Spurles bought up most of the land. And it wasn't until nineteen seventy that nineteen seventy one that that women and and all.
Thank you. Susan Mitchell, if you'll approach the microphone, you'll have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Susan Mitchell, resident of the Dunwoody Station subdivision. This evening, I would like to comment on two items that you will review in the coming weeks. I'm speaking with you tonight because I will be out of town for both the July twenty eighth and the August eleventh city council meetings. At your July twenty eighth meeting, I would ask you as a council to provide edits to the draft comprehensive plan so that that plan reflects appropriate growth and density in those parts of the city that are primarily residential. What is appropriate? It is that which the citizens at the public meetings have been telling you they want. Overwhelmingly, citizens have said development should step down in height and in intensity beyond perimeter center east. When you incorporate this guidance from your citizens into the plan, it is obvious that certain proposed projects do not comply. On August eleventh, you will hear the rezoning application for a two hundred and twenty unit five or six story apartment building on the site at the current Life South property. Apartments in this area contradict one of our city's core organizing principles. I'm gonna put the skunk on the table. We know that whatever is decided for the Life South property will influence redevelopment in the Ashford Center Office Complex behind it. Two hundred and twenty apartments will morph into eight hundred units shoehorned inappropriately into this area. Do not let this happen. Trust your citizens. Listen to the Dunwoody Homeowners Association, who do not support this development. And in the future, you'll be rewarded when you drive down Ashford Center Parkway to city council meetings with low density housing formats full of engaged citizens. You won't see a big, unappealing box of a building no one asked for and no one wants. Let's complete edits on the draft of the comp plan, then engage with developers who will create a well-designed transition from perimeters edge city and neighborhoods like those along Valley View, Ashford Center Parkway and Mount Vernon, making our vibrant city a great community. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, that concludes my public, the cards I have for public comment. And next, we have city manager comments.
No additional comments, Mayor, and we do not need an executive session.
Thank you. Council comments. Stacy.
Since this is our first meeting after the Fourth of July, I just want to thank everyone who is involved. I know for their Dunwoody Police Department. They, you know, they have to work the parade. It's part of their job and I just want to say a heartfelt thank you to, for all they do for working on a holiday and it's very much appreciated.
Joe.
Tomorrow's the voting day. If you haven't voted early, go to my voter Georgia page. It's a very low voter turnout. Exercise your rights. Please go and vote tomorrow.
At your regular precinct. Anybody else? Thank you. That, I, that's it, I think. I need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Move by Joe, second by Rob. All in favor, say aye. Any objections? No, thank you. See y'all next time.